So whatever you get done, open that down like we pass those back.
Is that?
Air Haven.
Yeah.
Hello?
Air Haven is, yes.
Probably text from it's nine o'clock. It's a joint, it's a joint, joint. I didn't mean that. That's right. No, joint meeting. Yeah, yeah, it's hard to say joint when you're, yeah, no, it's not upon us. Know where your guys' minds are at. It's nine.
Good morning, everyone. It is 9:00 a.m. I'm going to call this meeting of the Caddington County Board of Commissioners to order. It is Tuesday, June 8th, 2021. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance and I guess it's, we'll have JT lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Just a reminder, if you have a cellphone, if you would silence it, please, if you need to take a call, if you can step out, and we are streaming live on YouTube. Call for public comment. We will do this during the open part of our meeting. It's for items that are not on the agenda. The two phone numbers are 882-624-8 and 882-6297. Are there any conflict of interest items for fellow commissioners today?
No.
Okay. Item number four, action to approve the June 8th, 2021 agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. Action to approve the June 1st, 2021 minutes of the Board of Caddington County Commissioners. Motion by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Gable. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. Monthly reports. We'll start out with the auditor, Cindy.
We have just about all of the 2022 budget requests in for the various departments. There are a number of the nonprofits that have not submitted a budget request this year, so hopefully we talked, when we talked last year, I reminded them that they had to have those in, in the month of May or June, so hopefully they remember that. We have been busy preparing a spreadsheet for all the employees for the change to the new wage schedule. I've prepared a worksheet and sent it to Natalie for her review. Hopefully, we've got everybody in the right spot, and there are a number of things pending on that yet because of union negotiations still going on, so that's a worksheet, worksheet in progress. I did apply for the American Rescue Plan, state and local fiscal recovery funds. Have not heard that we have gotten any funds yet, but the application has been submitted. And then, just a reminder that June 29th is the fifth Tuesday of the month, so per previous action, the board will not meet. Just need to plan accordingly.
Just a question, manager. So on the 15th is the city election, you'll be counting ballots that night?
Yes, we will. My office has to be open at 7:00 a.m. because we have to be here in case anybody has a question on their voter registration, so one of the girls will be coming in at 7:00 that morning, and then we have to stay, have to have somebody in the office till 7:00 p.m. to answer any questions that come in on voter registrations, you know, after 5:00 o'clock, and then the city will be bringing their ballots here and they will be run through the scanner. We've done a couple of tests already to make sure everything's counting correctly and.
You think that'll be a quick process that night? It should be. It's just municipal election, right?
I mean, it should be, but I mean, there's a lot of interest in this election, so I assume it's going to be a higher turnout than, than normal, but considering how many ballots we cast or we counted in the general election, it just depends on how quick they get the ballots to us, so. The scanner has worked well for, during the testing period.
I know it's city election, but any idea how many ballot?
Early votes?
Percentage is early voted or?
No, I do know that the very first day, the finance officer said there were a lot of people in the first day, and then after that three-day weekend, they were really swamped a week ago today, and early in the week, same as in our office, people come in after they've thought all weekend about how they want to vote, so Mondays and Tuesdays are very busy days, and I think the city has also seen an uptick in the early voting compared to what it used to be. Couple of years ago, they had a record number of early and absentee voting, so I don't think it'll be any different this time.
Early voting's at City Hall.
Correct. We have signs on the door, but people are used to coming here, and then if they're calling and asking us a question about where they can get their sample ballot or stuff, or something, we do remind them also that if you want to vote early, you have to go to City Hall for this one, so. It's a little confusing, but every other year, that's the way it is.
If you're not a resident of Watertown, we still can vote.
There is, there'll be five precincts. There'll be Ward A, B, C, D, and E, and then there'll be a precinct for the rural Watertown School District, so anybody who's, does not live in the city but lives in the Watertown School District, they have that school district ballot to vote on. And voting on Election Day for the city election is at the arena, the high school.
Very good. Any other questions, comments?
And I, you know, don't want to step on anybody toe, anybody's toes though, because this is not my election, so I'm just giving out general information for specific information. You need to call Kristin Bobzine at the City Finance Office.
882-6200.
Correct. I have an even better phone number, but I won't give that one.
She probably does not want you to give that one out. We'll write it down on a piece of paper.
Yes.
All right, let's move on then to Director of Realization with Shawna. Good morning, Shawna.
Morning, Shawna.
Okay, so, I haven't been up here for a couple months, but. Is that better? That's better. Is that one better? Can I shut it off? No. We think and hope that our appeal season has, is officially over. The deadline for OHE was May 21st. We, OHE only notifies us if we have an appeal, and we haven't heard anything, so we're assuming no further appeals going on. The appraisers have started going out. They are in Rawville and Lake Townships this summer, and then hopefully, when they get done with both those, we can slip Richland in. It's not that big of a, there's not that many properties in Richland, but we'll see how it's going. It's going, knock on wood, pretty smoothly so far. And I know that I had mentioned, we just went to conference and spoke with the Department of Revenue. We're getting a new property tax director, which actually works with us in the Department of Revenue before, so then, one of our field supervisors, they call them, is moving to Pierce, so we'll be getting a new one of those, but hopefully, there won't be that many changes. But with this new shift, I know I had talked about implementing a new soil survey for the counties. They have decided, they're having a little bit of trouble with some of the counties putting it on, so they want to actually stop implementing them for now, go back to the drawing board with SDSU, make sure any problems that they're coming across are worked out before they make us implement this new soil survey. I mean, and it's not every county. I have looked at, I was going to start doing the whole process right now, actually, and I had started just looking at some of them. Ours look like we don't really have that much for issues, but we're just going to wait and hold off since there's really no way to just test it out without actually updating our whole system, and if it doesn't work for it, it's just going to take too long to back off, so. So we're just going to wait with that.
So is that, is that new software, or do they?
No, it's, well, it's actually a new Table 1 is what they're called, and so the Table 1 basically gives you all the different soil types that you have within a county, and this new Table 1, ours was updated in 2010, which is way newer than a lot of the other counties. That's when we switched from the paper version to the GIS, but they're giving out way more soil types now, so they're breaking down.
So even more.
Even more soil types.
Reclassification.
Yes.
Soil, soil ratings.
Yes, and since we had already had an update in 2010, ours isn't going to be as difficult. It's more the ones that haven't been updated for 30-some years that, that are kind of having the issues, and there's going to be big changes there, so they just want to make sure it's perfect before.
So it's going to be more so, it's going to get more complicated.
It could get more complicated, or it just could make things better. I mean. Get more accurate, yep, yep. That's what we're hoping for, yeah.
I don't know if any of you have followed the, the market as far as the land values, you know, in auction sales for lands. It's, it's skyrocketed. It has just gone, it's gone crazy. You know, that's what, you know, 15, $16 beans and $6 corn will do. Anyway, it's, it's very, very high right now. I think if you're my age and you've had half a section of land, I think you'd probably be smart to unload it, because it's not going to stay there forever. I know that.
No, and the whole market everywhere, it is skyrocketing. It sounds like when we were at conference, I'm like, it, right now, you can put a house on the market and it's sold within three days. It can be sold within an hour. I thought it was more just Watertown, but it's all of South Dakota. It is extremely crazy. I'm hoping that this comes down. I just did a small study, ratio study, just on where our county is sitting at, and most of our neighborhoods in Watertown are in the 70s, and I like them to be at 92. They have to be at least 85. So hopefully, it slows down a little bit, otherwise, we're going to be looking at big increases, but.
Especially around the lake.
Yes, we will deal with that when the time comes.
Yeah.
You'll, you'll get your wish.
Yeah.
Give it about a year, year and a half.
Yes. Well, and even when, you know, everybody else's values went down in the 2007, 2008, our market just stayed stagnant. It never has really went down, so hopefully, for the people buying houses right now, it doesn't go down, but I'd like to see the prices go down.
Yeah.
That is what drives.
Yep. The interest rates drive that a lot, and interest rates are very low. We were actually discussing, like, when our parents took out loans, they're probably paying as much as we are in your house payment, just because their interest is so much higher than ours is.
Spend a lot of people re.
Refinancing.
Refinancing loans.
Yep. Something to watch, anyway.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments for Shawna?
Nope.
Thank you.
Good. Thanks, Shawna.
Thank you. Have a nice day.
We will move on then to Welfare Director with Sarah. She has some information in her package. Good morning, Sarah.
Okay, so we start with the overview of the services. Did you get that chart?
It's in the package.
Okay, okay, sounds good. Perfect. So it just goes over the monthly, the individual served. One thing that we know in the human services world is the number of people served doesn't necessarily determine the intensity of people served, so even though our numbers aren't all that much higher, 37 unique individuals versus 34 in April, it felt much busier. We had some people with a lot of needs coming in and different needs, so. So we were busy in May doing that, and then the costs right now, we just have the burial costs. I will check into the COVID funds for that. I'll check with the funeral directors, because I know they've stayed on top of that a bit more with that. And then, as far as services provided, continue to be primarily housing with the CARES funds, some utilities. The SG has been busier, which is the Emergency Shelter Grant through ICAP, and, yeah, so just, I don't know, referrals out to agencies primarily again, CARES, Energy Assistance, ICAP, so that partnership continues to be a good partnership with ICAP. Any questions about that piece of it?
So I think just, you know, the reason like the services provided are, those numbers are so much higher than the individual service, you know, an individual will come in and have several, several issues you're going to have to address, just so people understand what they're looking at here.
Right. One person may have several issues when they start working with them.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're making referrals to a lot of different.
And so then, so people also understand that like the services provided part that middle chart, I mean, each one of those services turns into some kind of referral. That's kind of what's going on there, so you're seeing whether you're dealing with it in-house, or we can say through ICAP or CARES or whatever, so.
Did, did some of these spikes in the fourth quarter in 2020, I see a consistency there, start with the new COVID program?
Yes. Yeah, because the CARES funds became available in December of last year, and so that's when we really started be able, to be able to do.
So this is, this is a false positive. If we wouldn't have had the CARES fund, we wouldn't see these numbers.
Right, exactly. Yeah, yeah. Well, not, not, we wouldn't have seen probably in that number, because, because the county took that contract and did that, those individuals came to the county, so if another agency would have taken it and done it, though, a lot of those numbers would have gone there. It's been really helpful, though, on a lot of levels to have that. One, because we know what support people are getting, so if they come to our office, we know what they've qualified for, so that's been helpful to have that, to know, yeah, yeah, that directly affected.
What I'm saying is, we're probably not going to see the particular numbers this following.
Well, so, like, I don't, I don't anticipate that, however, the CARES funding is now going to 2025, so we could still have numbers coming up. Those contracts, yeah, so we will still have funding available for that, and those contracts will be coming out hopefully within the next few weeks. They had wanted to have them out by this week, but then we don't have them yet, so we'll have better, a better idea on the actual dates and amounts and things. Yeah, it's starting to get a little bit confusing because we have multiple programs now. We have the CARES funding, which was the initial, and then there's ERA Funding 1, ERA Funding 2, and then there's another one that's coming out too, but they all fall under that same funding source.
How are we doing on, I see, I'm just looking at our burial dollars here, and it looks pretty high, I think. How are we?
Actually, when I was doing the budget, we're, we're pretty on target for where we were previously.
That was going to be my question.
Yeah.
Sorry.
We just had several last month, so sometimes when you get them, you have quite a few.
Yeah, and like, and now we didn't really have any in May, so. Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, but when I, like I said, when I did the budget, we were fairly close to what we had previously.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have a question for you, Sarah. There's such a thing as forming a multi-county burial association. We were, because a lot of these, a lot of these funeral homes have not only, but there are different counties, and, and I know we pay, we're quite liberal with ours, we're, we're kind of towards the top of the list, but with Hamlin and Dool and Roberts and stuff, you know. Just.
I would make a comment there. I think, I know we look at them and I watch those month by month, but, you know, like, we have, you know, insurance programs for the, the poor and for the judicial system, but if you'd see what the indigent funerals were in Minnehaha County, you'd say, let's not even go there.
Yeah.
They're just unbelievable.
I wasn't thinking about Minnehaha, because I know they're going to be high.
But if they form a state group, there would be.
Five county or something like that.
And I, and I don't think they'd ever go for that. It'd either be all or none, you know, state or none, just like, just like the other programs that we have, you know, and Minnehaha County and Pettit in the county are very, very high.
Yeah, I'm finding that the counties like to be very independent, so not surprising.
Well, it's probably a state statute that requires each individual county to provide indigent burials.
Right, and so it is laid out as far as where people live and at, like, even if they go to, so like, let's say, somebody from Watertown goes to Lake Norton Nursing Home, they're still considered a Watertown resident, so Watertown would still take that.
Follow their residency.
Just a, just, just something for.
It, it would be beneficial to have more uniformity across, but, but counties all look so different and have such different populations.
People are wondering that, that number there is, based on what your, your other chart, that's nine burials for the year.
Seventeen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars.
Harley, maybe we could form a new state, northeast South Dakota.
Question would be, would Western Minnesota join us then?
Yeah.
Okay, so then, we already kind of talked about the CARES Act. I'm moving on to the rest of the report. There were 20 new applications in May. We reimbursed $3,300, which is 66 hours, and as I mentioned, the ERA 2 funding is starting, and we should have that contract here. Probably, as soon as we get that, we'll get on the agenda.
Yeah, they were working on that still.
Yeah. The ICAP hours, she, we reimbursed 54.75 hours this month, which is approximately 14 hours per week, and that's for Amy to do help with office coverage, community meetings, client contact documentation. One of the things that continues to be a very great relationship and a good partnership, one of the things I'm seeing is now that I'm full-time with the hours that I have and that we've worked out the office pieces a little bit, we may not need ICAP to provide as much office coverage as they have been, so when we're looking forward to the new contract, that might be a piece that we look at if we need to reimburse it, or contract for the same number of hours, since we don't need as much office coverage as was previously needed. Office functioning, just some brief updates. We're, I'm continuing to look into the client software program. You know, we had looked, this is one of them that we had looked to see if other counties would join in, running into some stumbling blocks there, so that's kind of at a standstill right now. Brookings, Mike is retiring there, and so they're readjusting some of what they're doing, and they were going to be a partnership there.
Just so, just so I don't get mixed up, so you're talking about general client software for in your office versus you say the system appears to.
Yes, yes. Yeah, this would just be for our office tracking client information, what, yeah, what we're doing, what we're providing to clients that come in our office versus the community. So that was going to be more of a county system, and so I'm kind of waiting for the pieces to fall where they will, and then we'll look at if other counties are still interested in.
I wonder if some of the nonprofits might have some ideas too. They must have some systems that they.
Yeah, they do. Most of them are pretty unique to their services, and so that would. So that would be nice where the county has the medical pieces and some of those kinds of things that others don't have. It would, it would have been personalized to what we do, so, so we'll see. We're working it through. Carrie and Amy are going to do that poverty immersion training next week, June 15th and 16th. Three other community members were interested, but some schedule conflicts and things, so one other community member is going to do it. It's offered again in December online, and so there might be some other people that do it then as well. I did get registered for the Leadership Academy. I'll do the September through the December 17th, so thank you for that. And then, we are continuing to do a weekly staffing to review client needs, which has been helpful to make sure that we're, people aren't getting lost in the services or in the shuffle of things. I have started updating the county welfare guidelines, and so that's something I'd like to do annually. Previously, it was a pretty extensive binder that, and so I'm trying to narrow that down, basing it off what Brookings and Minnehaha County have used for their guidelines, so I'll update the guidelines and then the procedures as well.
Would that, sorry to interrupt. Would, so would that be a policy? I mean, the previous, I, we, I've looked at it a few times. It's kind of, it is big, but is that something that we have to kind of like personnel policy, like, like it's a, like we have to adopt that at some point?
Yeah, we would need the approval on that.
Yeah, so I will, what? Yeah, I will have to bring it to you once we get it. I just want to make sure we have it a little better.
Right.
Yeah. So, yeah, heads up that that will be coming. And then, yeah, like I mentioned, the needs have been higher, even though the numbers haven't been a lot higher, the needs have really been higher, and then, as far as the apartment for emergency housing, we finalized the lease on that. Brothers and sisters behind bars currently working on furnishing it, and hopefully, would be available for, as needed, any day now, just kind of getting the last pieces in place for that, so. The systems of care pieces, then, we have our interagency meeting this Thursday at 2:00, and so everyone in the community is, or any agency provider is welcome to come to that, anybody who provides services for that. And then, the Communications Committee, which is the one that's talking about the, how we have communicate across agencies throughout the community, they met. One of the things that we've talked about interim is setting up a Teams format, so that we can have a quick messaging system if we have people in need. So we're working on some of those pieces with that Communications Committee.
Microsoft Teams or?
Yeah. Yes, Microsoft Teams. Yeah, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, so it would, they'll have to, we'll talk about it at the interagency meeting this week. Getting that, yeah, because we have to make sure things stay confidential. What?
He's teasing me. I thought it was a good question.
Yeah, yes, Microsoft Teams, yeah. There is also, Department of Health received a grant that might speed up the software program, and so I have a meeting with Betsy from 211 on Wednesday to talk about that. So have an update at the interagency meeting. Our Housing Committee, we will have our first meeting this Thursday at 9:00 a.m. with that group, and so hopefully, we can start addressing some of the housing needs in the community with that. And then, one of the other things that came up at the last interagency community meeting is the Resilient Communities, and basically, we had a meeting, and that is a framework that will, I think, will be really helpful for our community to follow, so we're moving forward with doing the Resilient Communities as part of a support thing for the interagency meeting. The interagency team meeting will still remain the interagency meeting.
Is that meeting at the police station?
So the housing meeting, the meeting locations have been my biggest challenge, because I'm scheduling all these meetings. The Housing Committee meeting will be at the police station. The interagency meeting will be at the Boys and Girls Club and on Zoom.
The housing meeting is just a smaller group right now, trying to get that developed, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's just a, probably 10 to 15 people right now, initiating that. Yeah, yeah, that's just a probably ten to fifteen people right now, initiating that. And then, so again, to close up a client highlight, this was a client that came in this month. She called in looking for healthcare assistance due to an imminent health concern she was experiencing. In the initial assessment I did with her, we determined that she was unable to work due to COVID complications, and they could not afford her husband's employment insurance. She had found a job, but they had used all their savings and were struggling to make ends meet until her first paycheck. I referred her to a private insurance company where they did discover that the entire family qualified for free insurance under the Affordable Care Act, which was able to start immediately, which is wonderful. And then we referred to Carrie for the CARES, which assisted with rent and utilities. And because they qualified for CARES, Amy with ICAP was able to assist with some other living expenses, like food and gas and those types of things. And it allowed them then to be able to cover their daycare expenses until she received that first paycheck. And so throughout the whole assessment process, the mental health needs for one of the other children was also identified, and we also made a referral to the Human Service Agency for some additional support for their, for the family. Yeah, it was really an example of how those combined services allowed the family to meet their needs and help them get back on their feet.
The way it's supposed to work.
Yes.
And what's nice is that everyone is together, working together on this now, in, in one place, so.
Yep, it was a really good partnership.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Sarah.
All right, let's move on to item number seven, action to approve the auditor's account with the treasurer and note monthly registered deeds fees.
The monthly register of deeds fees collected in the month of May were forty-three thousand sixty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents. And then you have the auditor's account with the treasurer, shows you the cash and cash items as of the last business day in May. Second page of that report shows you where our cash fund balances are as of May thirty-first.
Motion to approve.
Second by Gable, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Pose, that motion carries. Item number eight, action to approve advertising and hiring of a state's attorney legal secretary to fill a vacancy. And we have Becky here this morning to fill us in.
Yes, I am here again to ask for permission to advertise for a full-time secretary. Lisa Felch is transferring to the sheriff's office, so we have a vacancy in our office.
All right, motion by Gable. Cindy, you get to pick, Myron, okay, Johnson. Any comments, questions? Okay, all right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Yeah, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Pose, that motion carries.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you, Becky. All right, item number nine, action to approve a notice of public auction for lease of county hayland. And this is something we've done, it's on what, every two or three years?
Our last contract was a two-year contract, and it expired October thirty-first of two thousand twenty twenty. So we need to publish a notice that we'll have, be having a public auction. Whoever wants to bid on the right to put hay up on that land, the land is the piece the county purchased off on Highway two, it's off of Highway two twelve west, on the north side of Highway two twelve, where we had looked at putting a, a new detention center facility at one time. So, yeah, we have to advertise notice of public auction, and then at the board's meeting on the twenty-second, you'll take bids from whoever's here who wants to bid to put that.
Move to approve, second.
All right, motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, that motion carries. Item number ten, action to approve an agreement for the annual WIC clerical services, Cindy.
This is our annual contract to, with the state of South Dakota for clerical WIC services. Contract this, for this time period is July first through June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-two, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. The contract is in an amount not to exceed forty-four thousand six hundred and thirty-nine dollars. It's basically the same contract that we have approved every year.
Move to approve, second.
Johnson, second, by Gable, and any other comments, questions?
I hope everybody has read this page, then word for word.
So it's a, it's a fifty percent, it's a fifty percent match, correct?
No, it's not fifty, it's based on the number of clients that are served, is how it goes, so.
So the, so the federal funds obligated the forty-four thousand one and two, that's effect, like, a grant, basically?
That's a, yeah, and that's an estimate based on our prior, prior year, prior client. They pay so much per hour for each client that they deal with.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, that motion carries. Item number eleven, discussion possible action to approve an agreement for restoration of haul roads. We have Waylon on, did he, was he able to join? Please gotta add him in quick. So this is the agreement that we're working on to.
Good morning.
Waylon, are you here?
I am, can you hear me?
Waylon is not.
Waylon, are you with us?
I am, yes.
He's trying to unmute.
Waylon, are you against us?
Have you left us?
There it is. Okay, good morning, Waylon.
Good morning, can, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we aren't able to hear you, hopefully we aren't having that issue again, Lee.
Says mute.
Can you unmute him on our end?
Can you hear me now, here?
Yeah, we can, hear you call, Waylon.
Check your mute button.
No, it's, sometimes it's, if he's, if he's got the wrong, if you're picking the wrong microphone, you might have an issue. The little arrow by the microphone icon might help you out.
Hello.
I love technology.
How about now?
All the systems, all the systems are different.
Why don't we just call him, we can watch him talk to us.
I, I tested.
We'll call you, Waylon.
We'll call you.
All right, we're not gonna say the number out loud, do you wanna dial him in on that system right there?
Number's right there.
Okay.
Give us a minute, we'll call you, so we'll get the audio by phone here.
Have to hit nine, Cindy, you know, okay. Uh huh. That's what I'm talking about.
I hadn't heard that in a long time.
Yeah, I missed a number.
Operational error, we're gonna try it again.
Can you guys hear me now?
You have to mash the right buttons.
This is three digits.
There we go.
Nine one five.
Sorry?
You have to put a code in.
Okay, I have to dial the code now?
Rick, can you just give him a call on your phone?
Nine one five seven six two nine.
What if?
He's trying to call us, though.
Cindy, can you come dial?
We could have him call the, the number to call in, too.
So this converts to the correct line?
Then you have to go outside.
Do you?
There. Here we go.
Sheet back to me, please.
Hello, someone.
Hey, Waylon.
Morning.
Good morning, I'm going to, I guess you guys can't hear me.
We can do that.
We can hear you.
Yeah, we're good.
You'll have to mute your audio, you'll have to mute your audio on your speakers, or, Waylon, or turn them down.
You don't like to hear yourself, hear yourself off.
Right, leave that on, because otherwise we're not gonna be able to hear him. There you go.
Okay.
Okay.
Who's starting this off, where do we wanna?
I'll let, I'll let Waylon take it away.
Okay, so I guess I believe that Rick had passed on, at least to Brenda and to Tom Burns, the latest draft agreement that we received from NextEra regarding the amendment to the agreement for road use repair and improvements for the all road project there, and we just received it yesterday afternoon. And it appears that they did try to take into consideration some of the comments that we provided on the latest draft agreement. I'm not sure if the commission members have seen this updated agreement or not.
They've, they've got it this morning, I gave it to him this morning, Waylon.
Okay, and so if, if you guys would turn to the second page of that agreement, that's essentially where the meat of the agreement sits. The item number one there discusses the dollar figure that NextEra is willing to pay or assist with on this project. And essentially what they have there is that the, the post-instruction road survey report that we provided in January, our cost estimate was eleven million four hundred and eighty-four thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars. And so that's what they're using as a base dollar value for the project. In this agreement, this states that they're in agreement to pay for the construction costs up to that amount and ten percent more. They did add the caveat that if, in the event the project bids are determined to be ten percent or more in excess of the estimate, then Crown Ridge One has the option to provide additional funds, you know, sufficient to cover the project or to reject the bid, in which case bidding would relapse in the fall for project commencement in two thousand twenty-two. And that's a change from the previous draft, where they had stated that their forces would be given the opportunity to complete the project, which is something we obviously did not necessarily want to happen, just with all of the efforts put in thus far by the county team, and the ability for the county team to, to oversee the project, we'd like to see it before that way. Another change that was made in this draft agreement was, the, originally, the developer said they would not be responsible for any quantity overrun of the project, and we kind of stated that that's, you know, the standard practice is you estimate the quantities, but it never comes out exactly as that. So although we'll do our best to ensure that the project is done, you know, as close to the quantity as we estimate, we're going to make sure that the work is completed in a quality manner before we start cutting quantities. So they did change that to just say that they would not be responsible for overrun above the bid, the winning bid, due to change in the scope of work, which I think is a fair statement. You know, if we come across, think that the county would like to see repaired since the road thirty torn up, but NextEra would be responsible for that. Any questions on any of those two items, I guess?
I have a question, Waylon. So if, okay, it says, in the event the project bids are determined to be more than ten percent in excess of the estimate. So if it's, whether it's lower than ten percent, but it's still in excess, which is, you know, say it could be eight or nine percent, which is still a lot of money, is that kind of, my, my, I'm not a lawyer here, but I'm a little concerned that, does it have to, is that a threshold that has to be reached before they can have the option of, of providing additional funds or choosing to rebid it in next year?
Correct, so I guess the way that the discussion that is that, that I understand to be is that if the bids are in excess but below that ten percent, then they don't care to have any involvement in approving the bid. The county can approve the bid up to that point, in which NextEra would provide those additional funds.
Okay, I guess I'm missing where it says that they would provide, say, if, say it's eight percent over the estimate. Does it say, did I miss where it says, because I, we're just seeing this this morning, but maybe I missed where it says that they would provide the additional funds.
It says in the, if the project bids are determined to be more than ten, so if it's under.
But, but suppose it's eight percent, and so they don't have the option of choosing to rebid it. I mean, we're, we're, we can approve a bid that's eight percent over the estimate, are they gonna provide us that additional eight percent? That's, that's, where does it say that? Am I missing that?
Sure, no, I, I understand what you're saying, I don't think that it particularly states that in there. And that's certainly something that we can ask them to add to the agreement, as far as just add the language that says that, that they will provide the additional fund up to ten percent above the estimate, and then.
At which point they will have, then they'll have that option to choose between, yeah, okay.
Sure, no, so that's, that's something that I can, so my, my intent here is to correspond back with them immediately after meeting with you guys here. In the interest of time, obviously, this project bids next Tuesday, and if we are hoping to get an agreement with them, essentially signed and funded in place, you know, that will have to, the back and forth will have to take place very quickly, so.
Also, Waylon, so you mentioned in the email yesterday about to reimburse the county for the engineering and testing services, and that's part of what you're going to run by them as well?
Correct, yes, so that's part of the original haul use agreement. There's a statement in there that says that NextEra, or the developer, will be responsible for all costs for restoration, and it explicitly includes design, construction, geotechnical testing, along with a number of other items. And so I'm going to take a copy of that agreement and send it back to them and, and ask them for a formal letter or a, or a formal verification that the fees involved with the engineering for the design, construction, observation, and the geotechnical testing is going to be taken care of under the original agreement or if that needs to be added to this amendment. Then I have to talk to Rick, I want to make sure, obviously, that the county has been, to this point, continued to get reimbursed for the invoices that Banner has sent for many of the evaluation efforts as well, because that also is all covered under that original agreement. So I do want to clarify that, and whether it needs to be added to the agreement or not.
Also, I guess, I have concerns with escrow account, I don't know, Cindy, how you feel, they're kind of wanting, the way it sounds, they want to do an escrow account rather than giving us like a check. I, I'm not sure how that will work, or.
When we have to pay a bill, we have to have the funds on demand.
Right.
That's all I can tell you.
So that's my concern with escrow, how will that work, how will we draw those funds out?
It, it's. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I guess my understanding would be is that they would fund that escrow account with the eleven million four hundred and eighty-four thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars prior to the bid. And then from that point on, if the bid comes in higher, they would add the additional funds to that escrow account, and then that would be used for the county to draw from. Now, I, I'm certainly not in this agreement with you, that a check may be easier. And I can ask them if we can avoid the escrow account and just go with the check and have those funds placed right, right, Tuesday.
That might be, they might, it's hard to say from the wording in the document, do they mean for them to, where it would be an escrow account that they would control? Or the one that we would, or are they saying?
That was the question that I had, is that accessible?
Well, that's the thing, if they're holding it, then how long is the turnaround time? If we request the dollars and then they send us a check, you know, what is that turnaround time going to be if they are the ones holding that? So we need clarification of what that exactly means.
Accessibility of the funds.
Sure, no, that's certainly something I can ask them about today as well.
Sounds good.
A question for you. When we bid this out and we come back with a figure, where does the, and it happens quite frequently, we have a change in contract or something that the contractor didn't see and goes for a change of contract, how's that handled?
Right, so the developer would essentially be responsible for any cost overruns that are not due to a change in the scope. So if it's, if it's a change due to whether quantity needs or anything that's within the scope of the project, the contractor's still responsible for that. They just, I guess, an instance would be if the county decides they want. they wanted to replace some culverts since the road's already torn up. Um, you know, the developer wouldn't pay for that type of change in cost. Um, outside of that, um, the, the developer will be responsible for anything that's related to the construction.
Right.
So if we, so if ABC Company gets a contract and they run into problems that they don't foresee, that's their responsibility?
Right. Then that negotiation, I guess, would have to take place, um, with NextEra and, and the county team at that time. Um, I mean, I certainly, we certainly can try to add whatever language possible to this to everyone's liking, but I obviously foresee that, uh, there's going to be a lot of delay and back and forth in trying to add too many additional items to it.
And we're dealing on a pretty tight timeframe here.
Right. I, I did speak with a county commissioner from a different county who has had previously wind towers and restoration of roads. And once that project was bid, whoever received that bid, if there was something different that came up within it, they had to eat those costs. They, they did not go back to, um, the wind or whoever was the developer at that time. So once that project is bid, they, they have to know what they're bidding on. So it's kind of on them.
Well, that's a change of scope. I mean, you know.
Well, that's, yeah, depends on, but.
Well, I know we're, we're pushing up a deadline and I referred to it earlier. In a hundred days, we have frost to bring reality in. So what if we, when we get some bids and we don't get this all done this year, did we, because it's late in the bid, it's late in the bidding season already. Uh, what, uh, and we have to carry this over with the escalating cost and the inflation that's impending. Um, how do we protect ourselves from that?
Sure. So, I mean, uh, as part of the contract, there is, um, liquidated damages or damages that would essentially be paid, um, by the contractor for delay in the completion of the project if it's not completed this year. Um, now there are opportunities on the owner's end, which may be the county, to, um, approach that in different ways. You know, for instance, if there's weather factors or, or, um, factors in which material shortage, um, you know, there's not a quantity of material available to complete the project in the timeframe, that, uh, that the county can address that in different ways and determine what truly is and isn't considered a damage throughout the winter, um, by whether it be suspending the contract or delaying the contract. But, um, as of right now, we have received a question from multiple contractors. Um, they are to bid it as if they are expected to complete it this year. And if it is, um, environmental factors that cause it to lay into next year, that they are to bid it to assume that they will continue to honor, um, their contract to do the work next year as well.
I guess, I guess my bottom line is this is a very large project and I don't want to see, I would like to not see the county incur on it, on stuck with part of the bill.
Sure. I, I certainly agree. And I guess, um, there is no intent for the county to have any responsibility for any of the costs on it, um, the way the, the contract and everything is written.
The idea was to get it done in a timely manner because as time goes on, I would think there would be more deterioration of the, of the roads if it's not taken care of. I don't know how quick that happens, but I don't know what your thoughts are, Rick, on that. Just, I mean, or isn't it going to change that much from one year to the other?
Everything's subject to change, you know, depending on, we didn't have too bad a winter and the damage that was done, we didn't have a lot more damage this spring. So if we have a bad winter, it's, it could completely fall apart over there. But, you know, we get done what we can get done. Start with the major stuff right off the bat and go from there. So.
So when is the, I'm sorry, when is the deadline for this or when, when does, when do they want to have this?
The payment, um, the, the deadline for substantial completion, um, is, I believe, early November and that's a completion deadline in late November. Obviously, we will take into consideration temperature guidelines for asphalt paving, but there, uh, is a potential that some of the gravel work and some of the, uh, seeping restoration type work could be done, you know, later into the year, depending on the weather or, you know, environmental factors, whether we get early freezes or not, um, that sort of stuff. But, yeah, it's intended to be finally completed by the end of November.
Okay, thank you.
Right.
Um, are we thinking that we want changes in this? If not, I can make a motion to approve it.
He's got, Wayland's got some stuff that he wants to send back.
Just to clarify it? Okay.
So we might, I mean, we might be in a situation where we're approving this before we open bids or what? Is that kind of where?
Next week.
Yeah. Is that kind of where?
If we can get it back in time.
That's the whole deal. If we can get it back there.
You have, what, did I say, how many days to accept a bid? Was it?
Thirty, wasn't it?
Thirty days? I think so.
So we can just put that on hold until we get this.
Maybe, maybe we should just go ahead and put it on the agenda.
Yep.
Oh, yeah. Well, this will be on until it gets taken care of.
Yeah, this is.
Yeah, we got, like it is.
Rough. This is a draft. We don't want to.
Right. Yep. So it's just a work in progress, but just wanted to also get your input. If there's anything else that fellow commissioners thought should be, you know, added to this or?
Wayland, one point of, if I could just add one last thing, on the, on that portion that says, um, Crown Ridge One, you know, in the event of 10% over.
Thank you.
Crown Ridge will, where it's placed, will have the option to provide additional funds in amounts sufficient to cover the project or reject the bids, in which case, so there, that's, the option is between two things there, just to make sure that's clear, between providing the additional funds or rebidding next year, basically. And then the, so that the gap that's not covered is that, you know, anywhere above the estimate to that 10%, where we would expect them just to provide the funds without having an option to do so. So that's kind of.
No, I cannot. I'll certainly, um, add that with my inquiry with them here that, uh, that we'd like that clarified, that they'll provide the funds.
Okay.
Up to 10% above the estimate. And then they can leave the additional language there that if there's trying to be more than 10%, then half the volume.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
And I guess, so, um, just to make sure that I'm clear, if I have conversations with them here, um, the commission would like to have a, I guess, final document to approve prior to signing, which would, um, hopefully happen next Tuesday at the commission meeting.
Yes.
At the same time that bids are open.
Yes.
That's right.
Yes. Yes.
That would be ideal.
So I, you know, I'm certain, I'll, I'll talk with them and how they, and their approach. If they would put the funding in place prior to that signed agreement, I would assume not. Um, but maybe it's something that could be prepared and as soon as that agreement is executed on both ends that that funding would be in place. Um, I just want to make sure that we're being cognizant that we'd be opening bids on a project that wouldn't be funded yet at that time.
Right.
So we, we, Cindy, we need those funds when we have bids received, right?
My concern is we have the bids, or we have the funds on hand when we have to pay a bill. I don't know that, I mean, that's up to this board on what you want in hand when the bids are awarded.
Well, I, I would like to see if we're going to do a final draft next week and to give this thing, so we don't run into a hiccup, that within a week or 10 days, they deposit the funds into our account. Is that unreasonable?
Yeah, because, uh, we'll open the bids next week and then the following week we'll award the contract. So there'll be a week there to have that all in place. So hopefully that could be in.
Is that going to be a problem? Are we okay this next week and they get, what length of time would you say that we should ask for to put the funds into our account?
I mean, I think that their understanding, uh, NextEra's understanding is that June 15th is the deadline in which funds are supposed to be placed. Now, um, if June 15th is the date that the contract is executed, they, if, as long as they have education that with these couple minor changes, I would say these changes don't, uh, don't make any difference on their end as far as what they're responsible for and what they're not, um, then they should be prepared to get those funds available within the next business day or two. I certainly wouldn't give them a week to 10 days to provide the funds. I would say, um, you know, if they execute the contract on their end or sign the contract on their end, so that is available to the commission to approve and sign on Tuesday, funds should be available on your Thursday.
Thank you.
Because we do not meet the last Tuesday in June, the 29th. So we have two weeks basically to get this going, because then we won't meet again till that first week in July.
Sounds good. We'll have it in place next week, hopefully, if we get that contract in place.
Hopefully.
Yeah, yeah.
And then we'll, yeah, we'll open them next week, award the next week. So, all right. Okay. Any other further questions for Wayland before he contacts them and works on this?
Thank you, Wayland.
Thank you for your help.
Yes, thank you, Wayland.
Yeah, I'll thank you guys for your input.
Thank you.
See you.
Yep, bye. All right. Well, I guess it's a work in progress.
Slowly.
I know.
As, uh, just, just curiosity items, has anybody contacted you about this? Have you got any off the record contacts about?
You mean contractors?
Yeah, showing any interest in this project?
Yeah, there's a lot of interest in it. Matter of fact, I'm going to meet a contractor here shortly. So.
Okay, just.
Yep. Yeah, there's, there's interest in it. So.
Very good.
Right. Thanks for a nice pick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to item number 12, discussion possible action to pass a resolution to enact a ban on open burning. It's getting dry. I talked to Jamie yesterday. He was going to gather some information. We'll see what he has for us today. Good morning, Jamie.
Good morning.
Morning.
While giving all the current information, um, the U.S. drought monitor I see has got some computer glitches or down, but this was updated June 3rd. We are still currently out of the woods as far as drought. They took us out of that B zero category a while back. So things are still pretty green around this area. Um, they don't show any potential critical conditions this week, but it's pretty fluid as things have happened with the heat over the weekend. Um, the winds are staying pretty persistent. So that's going to dry some more things out. Uh, this morning's, both sides of grassland for the next 48 hours shows a Haynes index of a, uh, four or relatively low. So right now we're sitting pretty decent. I don't see the need for any action, to be honest with you, after discussion with a couple of our, our neighboring county EMs. Um, days three through seven still shows our greatest chance is probably going to be Friday night and probably some severe weather. Probability, chance. But with that said, forecast out of the National Weather Service only shows about a quarter of an inch out of that system that could, but we're going to get a little relief on the weather as far as heat. Um, early, late this week, uh, kind of picks back up into the lower and high eighties on, uh, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So right now I think we're buying time. Um, next week could be a totally different story if we keep up with, uh, gusty winds. Criteria so far, humidities are going to be between that 30 and 50% range, uh, throughout the rest of this week. So, so far, I think we're sitting okay. I think we, but next week could be a totally different story. Um, visiting with a couple of these EMs, things are kind of coming into play. Um, I know West River, west of the Jim River, they're starting to throw them back on, out that direction, but they're not seeing the moisture that we had out of that, uh, close to two inch. So they know. But right now I think we're good. Haven't heard any complaints from the fire chiefs yet.
Where do we refer calls if somebody's going to do a controlled burn? We had one last week. Is it to the Watertown Dispatch?
The Watertown Communication Center. Yep. That is probably the primarily easiest one. And then they actually send out a push to the, uh, fire department in the district that it's involved.
Does anybody have that number right top of their head?
Eight eight two six two one zero. That'll get you the Watertown Dispatch.
Okay. All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, we'll just leave it on the agenda then and visit it week by week.
Yep. I keep it on for next week because it could totally change if we stay with this
Day by day.
draft. Yeah.
Yeah.
There was two grass fires reported over the weekend.
Yeah, one was a rekindle there, but yeah, even the one out on Highway 20. And I believe that was probably a discarded, I didn't hear, but.
Cigarette or something.
Cigarette. But the wind, the wind played the element there. So.
Even though we are green, there's some under evidently with.
Throw your cigarettes out your car windows, folks. It's a class one misdemeanor. You go to jail for that.
Yeah.
That it is.
If you can figure out who did it.
All right.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, item number 13, action to approve claims for payment.
I have nothing for 13 or 14.
All right. Now, item number 15 then, action to approve personnel changes.
I have two of those. The first one is corrections Sergeant Sean Nils, do an anniversary step increase to 2450 per hour. And the second one is Marcy Rosso, who is a cook at the detention center, do a step increase to step 12, 2020 per hour. And those are still on our old payroll resolution.
Move approved. Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Waterman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Post that motion carries. Item number 16, travel requests.
Two travel requests. First one is facilities manager, uh, request authorization to travel for a poison hemlock larvae collection. The date and time is yet to be determined. It is in the Nisland and Rapid City area. And the second one is the emergency management director, travel to appear for the state EM 101 class.
So moved.
Motion by Waterman.
Second.
Second by Van Duzen. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post that motion carries. Public notices, quorum of commissioners. Do we have anything going on that there could be?
Thursday, the Thursday is.
The interagency.
Yeah, well, the interagency and then the, at two, and on the emergency ordinance.
Joint city, county.
Yeah.
And that's at the extension at 4:15.
And also by Zoom, I think so.
Yep. Uh, Modak Dairy is having dairy days, uh, this Saturday. Is it from 10 to, let me pull it up here. I took a picture of the flyer so I would know.
10 to 4, I think.
I was thinking two or.
I think it's a Saturday, isn't it? Saturday, 12.
It's Saturday, the 12th. Yep. Okay. I'll just look here quickly. It is, they're celebrating 10 to one.
10 to one.
Celebrating 30 years. So that will be out at Modak Dairy. There might be a quorum of us there. I don't know. Don't really have anything else that I can think of that could be a quorum.
I don't either.
All right. Uh, old business. I have one thing for old business, something that we didn't mention. Uh, we did approve those firework permits last week, but we maybe should mention that if there is a burn ban in place, that these will not be allowed, even though they were previously approved, the burn ban will supersede them. So they will not, if there's a burn ban in place, they will not be allowed to.
And I did relay that information when I emailed the, at the applicants and the fire departments.
Very good. And I think they kind of know that, but it's better to be proselytize and vouch for it. All right. Any new business?
I have one thing for comment. I was approached this week by two widows, both veterans, and both of them had very high comments about the service they received at our, from our veteran service officer. Uh, some of them didn't know that they were, might be eligible for certain things. Uh, he was very, very thorough with them and is working with another company, which I don't understand, but there's another out, something on a trust or something. And, uh, the one person was rather infirm and he took the time to help her down the steps and help her to her vehicle. So, uh, thumbs up and thank you.
Thank you.
We've heard quite a few compliments or on our veteran service office, um, Todd. So we appreciate what he is doing to those individuals over there.
Very, that was very much appreciated.
Yes. All right. Um, I don't believe, do we have anything for the open? We kind of already discussed that.
Just to, Nico had a webinar on the, uh, American Recovery Plan funds.
Totally missed it.
Yeah. Well, it wasn't, it was, it was a lot, a lot of it related to other things within there that not, not the money that directly goes to counties.
Okay.
Just talking about, it's going to be a lot of work to figure out how to handle that. That's, they, they did talk, say that.
Yes.
Um, but then there were a lot of other things that say fire departments and, you know, law enforcement, general emergency responders, you know, those kinds of things. There's all sorts of other things in there.
I have a large printout on my desk if anybody wants to read through it.
Yeah, you can, you can go look at it recorded, but.
On what's applicable or what you can use it for.
If, if, you know, so essentially I think what they're expecting. If, if, you know, so essentially, I think what they're expecting, you know, things like counties to do is, you know, you might set up some kind of a grant program in your county, but then you got to manage that thing. So, you know, things, questions like, I still get to hire a consultant or somebody to manage it. Well, yeah, that would be, you know, those, so that, that's the kind of thing, but it's down the road, just so people understand that we're, you know, we're still trying to get our hands around it. And, you know, counties all over the country are still trying to get their, their head and their hands around it. So then there are a lot of, there are a lot of strings attached to how you, you know, use those funds.
Right. I'm hoping to, at the NACO conference, that they'll have breakout sessions on this and bring some information back and some handouts and help us maybe navigate through this. Because it is going to be, we want to be careful what we spend it on, definitely. All right. Any other comments for the open?
No, I have one short thing for the executive session.
Okay. So under personnel, all right, then, we will go into executive session under item number one, discussion of personnel items.
No, no action. I'll second. Not, nothing after.
Okay, no action. Motion by Johnson, second by Gable. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, we are in executive session.
Thank you, JT.
Here's that. Let's finish off. Reemployment.
Well, let us know if you do.[1797.04]